Can't really hear it very loudly, but good evening. It's now 7:05 PM and I call the meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board to order. It appears we have a quorum, so we will move to the agenda review? Nope, flag salute, flag salute. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, and next we are going to review the Board Superintendent Operating Agreement, and the Vice Chair has agreed to read it for us.
Members of the Board and Superintendent will work together in good faith as a team in the best interests of students modeling a willingness to learn together. Board members will recognize and respect the superintendent's responsibility to manage the school district and to direct employees in district and school matters. Board members will give careful consideration, listen to all perspectives to all issues brought to the Board by individuals and district leadership. The Board may only make decisions only at properly called meetings. Board members recognize that individual members have no authority to take individual action in policy or district and school administrative matters unless so authorized by Board vote. Board members must also follow the chain of command and communicate clearly with the superintendent when a question arises or a concern or complaint is voiced by staff member, student, parent, or community member. Board members will endeavor to communicate directly with the superintendent or board chair prior to meetings of the Board to address questions and/or concerns about agenda items. Board members and the superintendent recognize that good answers often require preparation in advance of Board meetings. When a Board member and/or the superintendent has an individual concern, he or she must communicate one-on-one with any member of the Board Superintendent team as appropriate.
Thank you. So now we're at the agenda review. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Sneddon.
The motion is to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? All right.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you. So the next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All right. The motion is to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yeah.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right. Now it's time for public comment. This is our first public comment period. We are glad you are here and welcome you to address the Board at this time with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the Board's Chair. If you are attending remotely, please email Board Secretary Debbie Valoff or put your requests in the chat feature of Zoom. Before beginning your comment, please provide for the record your name, address, relationship to the district, and the subject of your comment. In order to ensure equity among speakers, remarks are limited to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative, the comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the agenda that is specific to the discussion and action items of this meeting. Please be aware that the Board's role during the public comment period is to listen. Rarely will members of the public receive an immediate response to their questions or comments. Finally, the Board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or Board members during the public comment period. Remember that we all model the way for our students. We ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the Board's decorum policy. Thank you. Any members of the audience that want to speak tonight? Is there anybody online?
Nobody online has raised their hand.
All right. Well, we'll give them a minute or so. And maybe I'll just say you can raise your hand in Zoom. We're working on changing the language and the directions for that.
We only have one attendee.
Oh, wow.
And I don't think that they're going to raise their hand.
Okay, so Administrator and Staff reports are up next. Take it away, Scott.
Thank you, Jennifer, and I just wanted to say thank you to give our 14 administrators here a shout out. They had a very long day today. We were all at the Oregon Garden at our Assessment Cadre training with our teacher teams and just wanted to say thank you to our administrators. It's just really great to see them all together. And thank you all. And I'll wait while Daniel's gonna pull up the slides and go ahead and get started. I just have a few things I wanted to go over tonight. Number one is our Teacher Assessment Cadre this evening. We are in our third, going into our third year of implementation of a guaranteed and viable standards-based curriculum for all kids. And basically what that means is that all students in our school district have access to the same grade level content, and we make it viable so it's teachable within one academic year. So that's guaranteed and viable. And so a part of that is spending the first two years actually mapping out the content, saying how much do we have and how many instructional days do we have to teach it in? And so we've managed to do that. We did projection mapping the first year during the pandemic. Second year, we went right into unit mapping. You've probably heard that word so far. We're going into our last year of unit mapping this year. And if you look up here on the screen, my laser only works on this one, we're here. We're pretty much smack dab in the middle of our implementation, and we're just starting our professional development around common summative and common formative assessment. The operative word there is "common," something that we haven't had before, common standards-based assessment. We do have things like state testing, OSAS, or smarter balance testing, that every student in grades three through eight has to take, and then there are certain other grade levels in high school that need to take that test. We have STAR testing that basically gives us a general ballpark of how well kids are doing, but we really don't have any way of monitoring whether or not kids learned what was intended to be taught. Now, that is a huge statement. What is intended to be taught versus what kids actually learned? And then what do we do about that? So this whole week for four days, 30 hours, we have about approximately 50 to 55, including the administrators that were there involved in this training. The goal is for 100% of Silver Falls School District teachers to go through the Assessment Cadre, the 30-hour training, by the end of the summer of 2023. And so we're giving a little bit of time to say, okay, right now it's, you know, the coalition of the willing and who has time, especially given the year we've just went through. I think the numbers is impressive that we had this morning at the Oregon Garden, but by the end of next summer, we'll have everybody trained. By the end of next summer, we'll also have all of our units planned. And at that time, when we start going into the last year of our implementation, we'll begin training our PLCs on data teams, and that is if we're a team right here of six teachers in a department or a grade level and we finish an instructional unit, we've given the assessment, now let's come together and talk about it. So why did Owen's students do so well? And why did my students miss the mark? What are we going to do about as a team to develop a plan so that all of our students in the department, that the department reaches, are able to meet proficiency? And so we're well on our way there, and we kicked it off today. Leslie, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
I'm just so excited with the teachers that were in attendance today, and I agree with Scott. It's the early adopters, and it's across the district, K-12. It was so exciting to see, and we had some guests from Alala also joining us, so it was fun to see across the districts that we're all working together towards a common goal. Just really exciting times.
Any questions on that? Anything you're curious about?
When do you think that the unit maps will be available for the general?
That's an excellent question. I was just going to mention that, Jennifer. Thank you. Now, there's a distinction. What we will post to the public are projection maps, and that basically tells you as a parent exactly what it is your child will be learning. So it will be the standard. So say for Unit 1, if it's in fifth grade language arts, say, for Unit 1 is, say, five weeks. So beginning of September to the beginning of October, this is the instructional unit. These are the standards that we'll be hitting on. Now, the unit maps are very technical documents, and so we won't be posting those because they won't make any sense. That's the actual technical document that the teacher team plans instruction for. But what we're aiming for and our goal is so that our parent community understands exactly what we intend to teach and what we expect their children to know, because parents have every right to know. It also is a conversation point for parents to stay in contact with their school. I see that we're working on this. Can you tell me more about that? It's just a way for us to say, this is our public promise to our community, that when you send your child to us, they're going to get a full year of grade level content. And so we plan to have that up and running within the next.
This fall.
This fall. And so you, as a parent, will be able to go in and see exactly what standards your child is working on, given the time of year, all the way down to the instructional day. Teachers have an opportunity, teacher teams have an opportunity to adjust those maps, given their instruction, given the pacing, given the things that they've learned that school year. That takes place in the spring. Adjustments get made to those maps, and then we don't touch them. Because you can imagine having, making adjustments and not everybody being on the same team. So as a system, the projection maps really serve as our commitment to our community on exactly what children will know, and we take pride in the fact that our community truly understands what's going on in our classrooms. Any other questions on that?
Yeah. How much of that projection is what you'd call district-specific versus what sort of, here's what you have to do because the state says so?
Well, so as a public entity, we teach to state standards as a public school system, and we teach K-12, all subject areas. So we take our direction from ODE in terms of the standards that have to be taught. But it really is up to us to form the units, our teacher teams to form the units to get at those standards. And so, does that answer your question, Jonathan?
Well, you described it as being, you know, what we're going to teach, right? And I don't know that I know the difference between that and what a standard is.
So, can I try?
Yeah, go right ahead.
So the standards are the, what the child will know or be able to do, but you can't just go into the classroom and say, you know, we're going to learn this standard today, because it takes time. Usually it's overtime. So the district gets a chance to prioritize those standards and then figure out where in the school year those are going to be taught. And they could be connected thematically with units. There's a lot of different ways you could put the standards in, and so this is like the agreement on how the standards are going to be addressed. Because curriculum is like different than standards, like curriculum is kind of like the vehicle to get you to the standards. Am I saying that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, okay.
And so this is good feedback for me also, Jonathan, because in some of our work sessions, I'll be going over this with you, with you all. And part of my presentation and my workshop on Friday, we'll get at some of this too, just to give you a general understanding of what we're talking about.
Yeah, so somebody might ask, what's the new curriculum adoption that wonders?
Wonders.
Okay, so somebody might say, well, what's your curriculum and its wonders? But that doesn't mean that the teams decided that you're going to go lockstep through every unit of wonders from 1 to 25. So that's like another difference.
That's a big shift in understanding for all educators also, because a program that we buy from a publisher is no different than buying any book that we would from any publishing company. They're in it to make money. But the minimum threshold that we set for publishers in the state of Oregon, much like most of the 50 states, is only 50% meeting the standard. And so it takes far more cerebral interaction and collaboration with teachers to come up with, okay, what is the curriculum that gets right at the standards of what kids actually need to know? And then, of course, what we have at the end of the year is the state test, which is the standards-based state test, and so.
Okay. I mean, probably once I see one of these projection maps, I'll connect some more dots.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. All right. I want to go over what August 22nd is going to look like in terms of our journey towards a bond. And I'm going to say this, I've said it many times, I'm going to say it again. You, as the Board, have full control over when the bond is going to happen. Hopefully, we'll get to a place, and I'm just saying hopefully, hopefully things work out, and the stars align, and the data that we're looking at is very favorable, and you feel that you're making a data-informed decision, that in June you'll take action on whether or not we go out for a bond. And so we're just starting to get the wheel turning, if you will. On August 22nd, which is the day of our Board Work Session, Wenaha Group, the group that will be facilitating our bond process, will be working with them this next year, along with Jeremy Wright from Wright Public Affairs, will be touring our Silver Falls facilities. They just want to get a lay of the land. Now, Wenaha Group, who's going to be deeply involved in the bond, helping to form a bond recommendation with the committee, will be way more detail-oriented than, say, Jeremy. Jeremy wants to get a kind of a lay of the land here in Silverton, in our K-8 areas as well, and just to kind of visualize what our community needs. And so this is a great opportunity for them. They will join us that evening. Jeremy will join us virtually, because he only needs to be with us part of the tour. And Wenaha Group will be here to give a full presentation on what the bond committee will look like, including the charge of the bond committee. I've seen the charge. It's one page in length. It's very clear and very specific. It's one of the things we really learned that we need to focus in on from our experience with the three-year long-range facilities planning process. So start with, what we say in instruction, very clear targets. That's what we start with. And you will take action on that as a Board to approve that charge. It's also really important that we hear in that meeting what priorities you, as a Board, want to see in sort of the committee work. What would you like us to focus on, in your view? So that'll be sort of an open discussion, so you'll have time to comment on that. After that, Jeremy will write, will go into sort of a polling 101. We had a meeting with them a week and a half ago with Wright Public Affairs and Patinkin Research, who will be handling the polling. It's a very complicated, very mathematical method that they have, and it's, to be honest, way over my head. But they explained it to us in a way that it makes sense to me systematically. So they'll have the questions drafted by around the 13th. 13 to 15? I think that's it. And so we'll have time to preview those, so they'll get some feedback, and then they will bring them to you on the 22nd. So you'll be able to see, because it's one of the things the Board wanted, was to see what will the polling questions look like, and then you can give feedback to those also. That's critical, because we want to get the polling out the beginning of September. First week of September, plus or minus, we want to get it out then, because we got to close the polling and then organize the data so the bond committee can use it. Now, this polling, this round of polling, will be more or less an emotional temperature for the community. What we want to know are what are the major issues that the community is concerned about? It may seem like those things are obvious. At least I even asked that question. We could probably tell you what the concerns are, because, you know, we've been deeply involved in that. But we need to take an unbiased approach and really take a look at what the data is telling us, and the statistical stuff and the analysis that they go through is something, you know, I don't know, Steve, if you have any input on that, that they'll explain during the 22nd and then working with the bond committee as well. So it'll be different from the second and third round of polling. That'll be a little bit more focused on the bond recommendation itself. One of the major reasons why we came up with this idea is if there are things that we can address as district leadership, while we are working towards a bond, even though that is a ways off, then it's certainly something that we want to take note of to put all of our time, to put our time and effort into, because we never know what we might find. But it's really important to have an unbiased view that's kind of free of opinions and just the facts in front of us. Any comments or questions about that piece? We meet with both groups every other week on Thursdays. It's a standard planning meeting. What we've seen so far, I'm super impressed. They're very detail-oriented, in particular Wenaha Group, who has the lion's share of the work early on. Wright Public Affairs will pick up as we start to get closer to a bond recommendation. Steve, would you like to add anything to that?
I think that's an excellent summary. I'm also very impressed with Wenaha and their painstaking attention to detail. They've asked wonderful questions. They've done all the research. They've read most of the materials from the long-range facility planning process, watched some of the meetings. Very, very engaged and excited to help us. I think they're skilled facilitators, and we're really planning, we're thinking it'll be about four meetings. Of course, that could be adjusted, but putting together a good plan, and this full day here in the district on the 22nd will be a big, big day for them to be here, see all of our buildings, and then meet with you and hear what they're thinking and have some engagement. So that'll really feel like the kickoff.
I think it also really feel to you that Wenaha Group specializes in districts like Silver Falls, sort of our size, our makeup, sort of the balance of different perspectives. They work with a lot of districts just like ours.
This was a group that we probably, and we would have found out about them, but, you know, I think it was, the fact that we went to the Bonds and Ballots workshop was huge, that we got to talk with them and learn more about them, and they become highly recommended.
Right now, they're working with BLRB to go over the pricing or cost, because the numbers, I think, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but those were 2016 numbers or?
Oh, yeah. So one of the things that we're doing now is the, prior to the Long Range Facility Committee kicking off, the first step of that in 2018, 19, there was another ODE grant that helped us pay for a complete facilities assessment that included, you know, how much deferred maintenance there was and what it would cost to do things. Well, of course, those numbers were outdated even before inflation took off. So it was very important to have a professional cost estimator get on board. Wenaha has someone that does some of that work, and they're working with BLRB, Jonah, to look at those numbers. It was a different architectural firm that actually did that assessment, BBL. So they're looking to get those numbers updated so that when the committee gets together, there'll be more current data there to be able to talk about.
The last slide I wanted to show you is a little bit of review, but just to think conceptually in your mind about the three phases of a bond. And so we're going into Phase 1, and the key is that we need to do well in all three phases. Phase 2 is going to be the hardest one. That is, once we get the bond recommendations starting to form up, we need to take it out to our community to say, what do you think? And that's where all the listening sessions, and we'll go deep into that when we get there. That'll take place this winter. And our goal is to get as much feedback as we possibly can from those listening sessions around not what we want, but what our community is willing to support.
Jeremy Wright was very complimentary about the fact that we were not racing to get it done in May, but look at November as the earliest. And of course, we're not saying that's when it will be, but that's the best thinking at the moment. But, and it's your decision, but most districts don't allow enough time to even have a Phase 2. And that phase is critical, because there will be a recommendation in hopefully December to the Board, but then there'll be time to float the idea out to the public through another round of polling and feedback. And we need to talk to Wenaha more about it this Thursday at our planning meeting, but we're trying to figure out exactly when to have those listening sessions, because we think that maybe instead of the fall, it might make more sense to have those listening sessions in January and February as part of Phase 2. We haven't finalized that yet, but that's something we're talking about too.
Any questions on all of that?
Just a lot of appreciation. You guys are going in deep, and it's easy to see that a thorough process is being had.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you.
Okay, so let's move along then, you're done, to the discussion items. The first one is basically a follow-up to last meeting when we talked about kind of condensing the public comment statement as best we can and updating it with the proper language for the folks on Zoom. And so this is our chance to discuss it. Erin re-formatted it into a bulleted?
It's on page 13 of our packet.
Okay. Page 13 is in a bulleted format, and so this is just a chance to discuss it and say what you think.
Well, you know, the first thing I'll mention is we probably really should get the, either leave out the blurb about what to do in Zoom or make it exactly accurate, at least as of the day we do it. Who knows when it'll change again?
Yeah, I caught that. So it should be the raised hand feature, not the chat.
Perfect.
But I do think it should be in there. I think people, give them what to look for, look for the raised hand.
Yeah. On the second bullet, please provide your name, relationship to the district, and subject of your comment. My take over the last several years is that most people don't provide a subject, and I don't think they're going to start, and I would just leave it out if we're trying to make this briefer.
Well, and I'm okay with that, because, you know, my plan is to ask what the topic is before they start.
Well.
And so then that just, you know, we don't have to.
Don't have to state it.
Yeah, because people aren't volunteering it anyway, and that's why I want to be a little more interactive, so that we're following what we say that we want.
Okay.
I would just say, I think it's a, overall, it's a good improvement, good work, Erin. The second to last bullet point, where it says you may not receive an immediate response, I wonder if that might say, I don't know, may not, I almost say something more affirmative than that, like.
Probably.
You likely won't?
Likely.
Or probably won't, some adjective like that, yeah.
You likely will not receive an response. I like. Do you plan, Jen, sorry, I should wait until we were done with Owen's comments.
I'm finished.
Okay. It occurred to me, do you plan on asking also if they represent themselves or a group? Then I think we can just say, you know, individual remarks are limited to three minutes on the third bullet and be done. I don't think we have to say the whole bit about if you represent a group, we'll extend it to five minutes. If somebody says they're representing a group, we'll just extend it to five minutes.
I do think it's good, it's short enough sentence. I do think it's good to keep it in there, because if somebody comes up, at least it lets everybody know ahead of time that we don't have to do any further clarification.
Agree, I agree.
You know what I mean? I was thinking about that, honestly. But I was just like, it's a real quick sentence.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's fine.
I get it, though.
Almost nobody represents a group ever, so it was just kind of.
But we've had it.
Yeah, we have.
Mm-hmm. Anything else? Janet, are you still with us?
I am, yes. No, thank you. I think it's much clearer. It's a lot easier for people to just glance at and, and see really quickly kind of what the, what the rules are and how this works. So I appreciate the, the clarity. Thank you, Erin.
Tom?
No, looks good, Erin. Thanks.
All right, so moving forward, should we just make those changes and then put the date at the top? Do we need to bring this up in a meeting again?
I would suggest that we entertain a motion to adopt the amended public comment statement based on our conversation and just leave it. That's what I would do.
Okay. Well, we can do that now.
I would move that we adopt the amended public comment state, statement effective, you know, essentially immediately.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So the motion is to adopt the amended statement, amended, what did you say, amended?
The amended public comment statement.
Public comment statement.
And I guess specifically based on our conversation. There's a couple more tweaks.
Based on our conversation. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm just going to clarify the changes, just for, for full disclosure. So in bullet point one, I will put, you know, wish you raise your hand, please raise your hand to be recog- or wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized as the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. Second bullet point is only going to be for the record, please provide your name and relationship to the district. On the third, let's see, second to last bullet point is please understand the board's primary role is to listen, and you likely will not receive an immediate response. And that's it.
It's good.
All right. Debbie?
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
I'll add those changes and send along to you guys, to Debbie.
Debbie, yeah. Awesome. All right, then next is a very similar agenda item. We, Debbie edited the decorum agreement based on the discussion from the last meeting, and we just wanted to bring it to you just in case there were any more comments that we wanted to make.
For full disclosure, I was just changing the shells to will, correct?
Yep, shells to will.
Okay.
And the signatures at the end, is that new?
It was there on the original one after the budget committee.
Oh, okay. All right. So this is something that we would reaffirm with our signatures.
I'm fine with the changes, and I'm fine reaffirming with my signature.
Yep.
Any other comments? All right. You want to do your motion again, Jonathan?
Sure. I move that we adopt the updated public meeting decorum that is published on Board Book.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded that we adopt the public, the statement on public meeting decorum as published in Board Book. Any further discussion? All right. Jennifer? Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right. The next topic is the food service rates for 2022, 2023. And I believe Steve's going to help us make sense of the documents.
Sure. Thank you, Jennifer.
So yes, we published the 2022-23 proposed prices and the 2019-20 prices, because that's the last current document we have. In fact, it was August of 2019, the last time the board took action on meal prices. Obviously, because of then slipping into the pandemic, everything changed. So here we are, back needing to assess those for the upcoming year. And so when, 2021 obviously was mostly virtual, but there were some, you know, free meals delivered and free meal sites that year. And then last year, whenever everyone came back, the federal government allowed all meals to be free for, for, for everyone. No applications were submitted, and there, there wasn't any delineations in free and reduced and paid. As of July 1st, everything is reverted back to where we were at the start of the 1920 school year and before, where we do have paid, free, and reduced. So we do need, need to make an adjustment in, in the prices. These are the proposed prices, as I've consulted with both Marina and Elizabeth with food service. And the average, the, the average of the increase is about 10%. It ranges from nine to 11%. And, and again, they haven't been adjusted for three years, so I guess that would be about a three, a little over 3% on average. I guess if you look at it year over year, but it's about a 10% jump on those prices. We actually do have a requirement, it's called paid lunch equity, that we have to increase the paid published prices to keep up with the... We, we cannot subsidize the, the paid portion of the program with federal dollars, meaning what we get reimbursed by the federal government and the state for free and reduced meals. We do get a small portion back for paid meals, and then we get some back for reduced, and then we get more back for, for free meals. So for districts, say, that have a higher free and reduced percentage and more meals, meal production, they tend to be in, in the black, in the positive at the end of the year for their food service programs. Our, our district being 35 to 40% free and reduced, as you know, we've, we've been in the red. Except for this last year, I anticipate that we actually ended in, in the positive for this year, because all meals were free and there were more meals being produced and consumed with the same labor costs and more reimbursement coming back from the federal government. Now we'll revert back to, you know, to, to where we were. But the requirement for paid lunch equity is that if you take, let's say, I'm just throwing around numbers out here, if you get 50 cents back for a paid meal from, from the government and $4 back for a meal that you produce and give, give for, for free to someone that qualifies for a free meal, that's a difference of $3.50. So your, your, your weighted average cost on your meals have to be at least $3.50. Well, that's hard to compute, because our meal prices are different by, by grade levels. And we don't have history from last October, because we weren't producing paid meals. So the federal government, in June, they came up with a waiver for, for the paid lunch equity requirement for this year, which we, we will apply for. But it doesn't keep us from, we, we're not prohibited from changing our rates. In fact, if we don't, then when we run that PLE tool next year, we'll have to increase the prices even more. So we, we still might have to bump it up a little bit next year, but at least we're not going to be way behind. So I know that there's been some conversation from some, we've heard from some parents that would like it to see us to be able to just provide all the meals for free. But this, this was a federal government decision. I guess it doesn't keep us from doing something like that, but we're not in a financial position to do so. However, there are a couple of things I wanted to mention. One is, in 2019, Oregon passed a law, it's called EIG. It stands for Expanded Income Guidelines. And what that did was it helped make more families eligible for free and reduced meals. So before that, the, the eligibility was about 185% above the federal poverty line. With the EIG law now, people up to about 300% of the federal poverty level tend to qualify. And so the state and our food service folks really urge all families to, even if they haven't qualified in previous years, to fill out the free and reduced application, which is on the ODE website, which will also make sure is prominent on our website, put out in Parent Square, heavily promoted during registration towards the start of school as well. We'll talk to our principals and secretaries about that at our Leadership Institute Nets and Vault session next Wednesday. So, so that's something that a lot of people don't know about. I read a stat that even before this law, about 300,000 students qualified for free or free and reduced. I can't remember which, but for some sort of reduced-priced meal. And only slightly over half of those students participated. So that's, that's just a big thing, is, is promotion and making sure families know how to apply and, and, you know, urge, you know, urge. Some, there, there's some families that I believe if, if they've qualified before, there's some automatic qualifying, but most, most families need to fill out the form. So, so we'll make sure that there's a lot of discussion about that. In addition, it appears that Robert Frost and Mark Twain Elementary may qualify for what's called CEP. It's called the Community Eligibility Provision, which would allow all students at those schools to get meals for free regardless of, of their status. There's a lot of hoops to jump through to, to get to the point where ODE will approve that. And I'm working with Elizabeth and Marina to start getting the data to ODE. So we don't know the final outcome on that, but we're working, you know, be working hard on that in August. So, so those are just some things that I think people should know about that, that are very important, so. But tonight, I, I would ask that you consider approving these published rates for 22-23.
That's a lot of good information. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, comments for Steve?
All right, we will, this is an action item later on, so we will have another chance to talk about it later. So the next item on our list is 8D policy updates. These are all second reads. We had discussion about them last round, or our last meeting. Has anybody had any more thoughts on these or want to discuss them further? All right, sounds like no. All right, we are now at the second public comment period, which is specific to discussion and action items. Is there anybody online? Okay.
There's a few more people online, so we'll give them a chance to use the raised hand feature.
All right. If you would like to speak during public comment, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom, and we're ready.
No raised hands.
Okay. No raised hands, so thank you very much. We are going to move then to the action items. Ten A is to approve the food service rates for 2022-2023. Is there a, a motion out there?
I move to approve the first food service rates for 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the food service rates for the 2022-2023 school year. Any further discussion on this topic? Again, I appreciate the detailed explanation, Steve. All right, I think we're ready to vote.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, the next action item, or no, that's the only action item. The next item is future agenda item request. Does anybody have anything that they would like to have considered for future agenda?
Yeah, I wanted to suggest a, a topic just kind of around board member meeting attendance best practices. I think we could, we could circle back and have a good discussion about that.
Okay, I have it down. Board member meeting attendance best practices. Anybody else? All right. Well, without objection, I would say, meeting adjourned.